Talking about dates and everything, and we have, um, do we have minutes to review?
We do.
Yes.
We do, okay. And those would be from March fifteenth.
March fifteenth, yep.
And that was, all of us were here, and it was in regards to the public hearing about, uh, Walnut Street, pretty, uh, pretty clear cut, and then the next one was on Island Road, not very clear cut, but I think we came to a
Yep.
good decision on that one, and it looks like everything is in order there. Um, and then, did we have one more meeting, one more hearing that evening?
That was it.
That was it? So I'd like to enter, oh, I'd like to first call the, have a vote, a motion to open the meeting, which I did, and then we will vote on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Uh, second.
And, yeah. And vote on the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, thank you very much. Um, do we have any announcements or public comment in regards to anything?
Nothing.
Okay, nothing new, and then it being as it's seven oh three, we have to wait a minute before we open the public hearing on Lakeview Drive, so, um...
Then vote on the minutes? Did we vote on the minutes or open?
We did vote on the minutes, and opened the hearing all in one.
All in one.
All in one, expediting it.
We can sign the minutes.
We could sign the minutes, and that will take us a minute or two.
Yep.
And I could actually ask any of the board members if they need to recuse themselves on either of the hearings tonight. We have one on Lakeview Drive, and one, um, in regards to Ingleside Drive, and one in regards to Ahimsahaven.
I do need to recuse myself and sit in the audience for Ahimsahaven Animal Rescue, as I am directly involved with the rescue itself as a volunteer, and I have no financial interest in the rescue.
Okay. Ray Benoit's name is still on the back page, we need to change that.
We'll get, we'll change this.
Oh, is he officially out?
I have not heard his status, I don't know.
That would be something we should follow up on, it's been so long, perhaps, perhaps we need to take some action on that.
I'll contact his wife tomorrow.
Maybe he'd be comfortable coming back in as an alternate at this point if he...
Yeah, I'm not sure what his status is at all.
Right, mhm. And I think there's something in our policies and procedures where if you miss a certain number, this was a extenuating circumstances though. He had, he was very sick for a while.
Yeah.
All right, being as it's seven oh five, would someone like to read the public hearing notice for us in regards to the...
I can do it.
Got it.
Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven oh five PM to discuss the application for a special permit submitted by John Hill, owner of two-two-six Lakeview Drive, also known as Assessor's Map twelve, parcel thirty-eight, Winchton, Mass. zero-one-four-seven-five. Special permit request is to raise and rebuild the dwelling located at two-twenty-six Lakeview Drive. Said property is located in R forty suburban residential neighborhood district. The hearing will be held in the second floor auditorium at Town Hall, one-oh-nine Front Street, Winchton, Mass. zero-one-four-seven-five. All interested persons should plan to attend. Alternate, alternative translation and accommodation for disabled persons is available by advance request.
Thank you, and would the applicants come to the table, please? And I need to swear you in, and state your name for the record, yes, that's fine.
Oh, Gretchen Hill.
Thank you. Hi, John Gretchen, would you please raise your hand and swear to tell the truth tonight at this hearing, and just say you do if you...
I do.
Thank you very mu, thank you very much. Alrighty, so you're here before us because you want to, um, tear down a cottage and build another structure, and in reviewing the letter of denial from the, um, building inspector, it seems as though the structure is over fifty percent of what's there currently. Um, that's what was stated in the denial, um, letter. And, um, could you just explain to the board what you want to do, and what the square footage is currently, and what it's going to look like?
Sure, so, um, we are, our plan is to, the existing home is twenty by forty. Um, we, our plan is to, yeah, and then it has a twenty by, I think it's a twenty by twenty deck on the back. We want to take the twenty by twenty deck, reduce it to twenty by seventeen, and close that, and then just put the cottage on, have a full foundation. So it's, the square footage is really, it's twenty-five hundred square feet, but that's including the basement. So the actual footprint is only twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
Alright.
And it's two-bedroom, we, we did get DEP approval, um, to do it. We're moving, uh, about seven and a half feet further away from the water than where the existing is now. Um, and that's, uh, renderings of what are proposed. So from the street, it's going to look just like a single-family ranch, a single-level ranch, just like it does today.
Yeah.
The look really is going to be no different. Um, see, yeah, pretty straightforward, that's, that's our, uh, our state DEP approval there that's on the screen.
Um, so how is it, tell me again the, how it's going to be over the fifty percent?
Well, so if you take the, if you take, it's going to have a full basement underneath it. So if you take the square footage of the basement, it, it makes it over the, it's, so it's twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet per level?
It's going to include in the deck?
Yeah.
You want to enclose them at the deck?
Yeah, so if you, if, if you include the, the full basement underneath it, it gets to the twenty-five hundred.
Okay, and you're, um, you're incorporating that, you're estimating three-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet for the deck, that's incorporated into that twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet?
Correct, so it's eight, it's eight-hundred square feet now, and then it's seventeen by twenty, so it's be, it'd be what? Thirty-four, so three forty, so it'd be eleven forty, eleven-hundred-and-forty square feet per floor.
Will you be enclosing that deck and making it part of the home?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's what's shown on the, both the plan, it's, on that plan, it's, okay, there you can see, so the top...
So the deck would have been originally off the, the deck?
The top left side, yep, where she's got her cursor now.
Yep.
That's the deck today.
It's grounds level at the street side, more or less.
Correct.
And then the...
Finished floor level is street level, or will be street level, because we're, the cottage is, it's lower now, we bring it up to floor with, uh-huh, street level, which is, if you see the, the, um, the picture that we had the engineer make for us, it shows, so it's, you know, you just look, just a single level from, yeah, right there. So from the street, that's what it'll look like.
And then that's from the water.
And then from the backside, from the lakeside, it'll look like that.
And...
And really, that's, so I guess the bottom line is, are, what we have today, we're really only asking for relief on that area that's existing deck today that we want to enclose, because the other area is already there. It's, it's kind of tricky, because we're, we're saying it's eight-hundred square feet, but I guess we're adding the basement underneath it too. Right now it has a crawl space basement, so we're just adding a full basement. So that's how you're getting this...
And a basement, and, there's no basement under the deck currently, I imagine?
Same, it's a, it's a crawl spa, no, it's a crawl spa, yeah.
Right.
But the whole thing is moving back?
Yes.
It's moving towards the street.
Okay.
Further away from the water.
We're going to move it...
Away from the water.
Correct.
Um, so you're not actually build, you're, you're using the square footage for the deck, but you're not actually building closer?
Uh, we're not...
And the footprint of that deck, you're moving everything.
A hundred percent correct, we're actually going under what the footprint is today, because we're on, originally, we were going to go twenty feet with the addition, because that's what the deck was. We're only going seventeen, because the house is only forty, if we went twenty, twenty, it just didn't look proportionate. So we're only going seventeen, so it's like three by twen, so it's like sixty square feet less than what the footprint is today.
So you're coming in and going up?
Correct.
Right.
Yep, seven and a half feet towards Lakeview, away from the water.
Right, and moving the whole structure itself, right?
Yep.
And I'm looking at the setbacks, it looks like the side, you have plenty of setbacks.
Yeah, we meet all the setback requirements.
You have the forty-five, and you only need twenty for the front yard setback. The rear, you have more than adequate, and the same with the side.
And in, in the neighborhood, both neighbors to the left and right, both have full walkout basement with, actually, the neighbor to the left has a two-story, the neighbor to the right only has a single. I think it, no, it's a two, they're both two-story, so well, actually, both bigger than this.
And how is Jeff deciding what the square footage is? What's he determining it off of?
The blueprint, the blueprints.
Yeah, he's determining the additional, um, because what used to be the deck is now going to be habitable living space, that's your increase in square footage.
But it's still going to maintain a two-bedroom home, because the septic is a two-bedroom septic.
Sure.
So we're, it's just going to be, it'll be one bedroom on the bottom floor, one on the main floor.
Um, oh, first floor, basement floor.
What's the dimensions of the existing home?
Twenty by forty.
Twenty by forty, so that's where you get your eight-hundred square feet?
Yep.
And...
An existing deck is twenty by twenty. So it's twelve-hundred square feet. Existing, well, but then there's a, there's a front porch thing on there, or something that they, I think they included in the... Yeah, so we're only going sixteen by twenty with our, so how are we getting forty?
I'm just wondering how you're getting twenty-five-hundred-and-sixty square feet for the home, for the two levels?
You know why, because it's, we're going, we're moving back seven and a half feet, but we're making that twenty feet, twenty-four feet, so I, I was wrong in stating that on four feet, the main piece of the house would be, is four feet bigger.
Yeah, so, if I could interrupt, so the main, um, it's nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet, because you're adding a hundred-and-sixty square feet to the house, because it's...
Correct, we're going from twenty to twenty-four, yep.
And then that, um, additional bump out in the back, that used to be the deck, is adding three-hundred-and-twenty square feet, because it's twenty by sixteen.
Yep.
So that's times two, because it's basement and top, so it's adding six forty. So it's a total of eight hundred.
So...
Right, is that right?
So nine sixty times two is eighteen, nineteen, twenty?
That would be twenty-five sixty.
Twenty-five sixty.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so that, I was wrong when I stated, so the, it's, it's twenty-four by forty, and the, the footprint today is twenty by forty, but we're going to, at, at four feet's going to be added on the street side.
Yep.
Because we're pushing everything towards the septic in the front.
So if we count the decks and the crawl space basement,
Mhm.
how much more, over fifty percent are they asking?
So we would be looking at eight-hundred times two, sixteen-hundred, plus the deck.
You, you don't need to count the deck at all, because it's not habitable living space?
So sixteen-hundred, and we're going to twenty-six, twenty, twenty, was it twenty?
Twenty-five ninety.
Twenty-five sixty.
Twenty-five sixty, okay.
I didn't bring any paper today, I, you know, I didn't either.
Right, remember back from the... Sorry?
So eight-hundred would, or fifty percent would be twenty-four hundred, we're at twenty-five sixty.
So we're at sixty-two point five percent.
Thank you. I've been out of school for a week.
So twelve, twelve and a half percent.
Sixty-two percent.
So twelve and a half percent over what's allowed.
This is basically what it comes down to.
I'm going to ask if there's any abutters, or any, are there any letters of concern or support, or deny, or...
That we've received in the office?
Hey, I have no questions.
If it helps, we did show both the abutters, and they loved it.
I wish they had written something for us.
Oh, I said we could call.
I don't even know where to begin, I begin with this statement. In my mind, it's a very similar footprint to what it has. It's a clear, um, improvement to the neighborhood, and the, and the, the home will be far more useful. I'm sure it will be year-round, will you be living there year-round, or still is a summer year-round?
Yeah, well, we have a home and range that we're hoping to sell,
Uh-huh.
um, to move there full-time, because we're in Florida half the year as well.
There you go.
So we like to be on the lake full-time, if we can get, you know, we have six grandchildren and five children, so it's got to be...
Busy.
Yeah. Good enough for us, but...
Um, what's the feeling of the board?
This has been approved through conservation.
Yes, it has.
There's no issues there?
Nope.
There's no abutters that are having a problem with it?
It's been approved by DEP, so there's really no issue.
Twelve and a half percent increase?
Right.
Or, over?
Well, over the fifty.
Yeah, over the fifty percent.
Right.
No additional elevation, which is good.
Right, and it's definitely not, um, impacting the people in back, there are no people in back.
There's one kind of...
Just the road, I mean, there's no, the abutters are on the lakeside, on the side, and I don't think they're really buildable lots right behind you.
No, I tried.
Right.
So generally, what, we, we tend to hesitate around getting over that fifty percent. This is kind of a weird spot for us, because I don't, I don't have a lot of problems with this design, per se, just that number
Yep.
is, is precedent-setting, sort of, so that's kind of my only reservations on, is that...
And I, the only thing I have, we've been duped a little bit in the past by a few people that have, I don't know whether we weren't looking at the plans properly, but if this is really what's going to be there,
Sure.
and for real is there, and no garages or anything else
We won't want that.
on the side, there's a couple that have been approved recently that, I don't think that's what I signed up for. And I'm, and it's the lake, and I also live at the lake, I live on the other side of the lake, and I, you know, we have to watch out and protect our lake.
Oh, of course, oh, of course.
And, um, that's one of the main reasons I, we try to stick as close as possible to that fifty percent. Um, and knowing that land also, I mean, people have been clear-cutting lakeside property, but there really aren't very many trees that would be impacted by...
There's no trees to be, this, this, I don't know if you know this lot, but the...
Yes, there's nothing there.
Beach is beautiful, I mean, it's all, that's why we bought the lot, the, I mean, it's sand right to the...
It's beautiful.
Yeah, it's not a step-down, it's...
Right.
And we actually bought some property on Hillside Drive behind us.
Oh, okay.
That we're hoping to get a permit to, we wanted to just build like a four-car garage,
Nice.
that we could keep our boats in in the, in the wintertime, because obviously, we can't fit a garage here. So
Right.
Kind of make use of a piece of land across the street that's kind of unusable.
Right, exactly. Would that be like on the west side of Hillside Drive, like on the, if, facing uphillside drive on the left-hand side?
Yeah, yeah, we bought two lots in the back there.
Oh, nice, nice.
Our original plan was to take the cottage that's on this lot and move it over there, but we couldn't get a septic with Matt, and so we just, we abandoned that one.
I appreciate your honesty in coming in with the plans as, as are built also, because, like I said, I think we've been duped a few times recently.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
We really had to dig and get the answers we wanted for, for that sort of thing. Now, the roof is going to be the same height, is that what you were talking about, Eric, when you said the elevation?
The elevation of the roof, it's still going to be a one?
Just a single story, yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to have a little steeper pitch than what's there today, but it's still...
Is the peak going to be higher, or is it going to be, yeah?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be...
A little higher, but there's no houses in back.
Because there's nothing on the other side, right?
There's absolutely, and they're unbuildable lots, the closest one in back of them is, you can't even see the house from the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, wait a minute, that house burnt down, so, you, you know, you really can't see that at all.
No, and if that's how it looks, you know, and that's how, you know...
And it will be...
It tucks right into the landscape, it looks, it looks real good, right?
It'll be lower than, because the house is on either side of it also.
That's correct, yeah.
So the, the one to the, to the right is a two-story with a walkout and a basement.
It's quite a bit taller than this.
It is, and then the one on the left is a little bit taller also.
Yeah.
But, um, and I think it's a wise move to move it away from the lake a little bit, too.
Mhm.
I personally don't have any problems.
No, no, this is just one of those rare circumstances where it tucks in nicely, it's, it's a, you know, similar, very similar footprint, and it fits there, so I don't, I don't have any more concerns.
So would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, and do I have a second to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, now any further discussion? Special permits, I mean, it seems as though I, all of the, for the motion, all of the, um, local regulations are being followed to the T, and, um, everyone in town so far that's seen it has approved it, except for the building inspector, and that's why you're here. So we have within our, um, power to, um, grant a special permit for this. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant a special permit.
Any conditions or any stipulations?
Standard, uh, has to follow all rules, regulations, has to be what you're presenting.
Yes, yes, if there are any changes to setback or dimensions, that will nullify the special permit. Alrighty, so we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
I won't let you down, thank you. So I'll type up that decision, and then the board will sign it, and then I'll let you know when I stamp it in with the clerk, when your twenty-day appeal starts, so you can't start work until the twenty-day appeal is up.
Hopefully, it'll be warm by then.
It should be, hopefully.
It better be.
May be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night, folks.
Alrighty, and since we don't have any times affiliated with ours, thanks to our new...
Isn't it nice?
Wonderful, we can start our second, um, hearing right away, and that would be on Ingleside, and, um, oh, the sign. Um, would someone like to read that notice, please? Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April nineteenth, at seven oh five PM to discuss the application for a variance and special permit submitted by the town of Winchton for eighty-six Ingleside Drive, also known as Assessor's Map five A three, parcel three-four-eight, Winchton, Mass. zero-one-four-seven-five. Variance and setback per section seven point two of the Winchton zoning bylaws and Article nine of the Town of Winchton zoning bylaws. Said property is located in an R-ten neighborhood residential. The hearing will be held in the second floor auditorium at Town Hall, one-oh-nine Front Street, Winchton, Mass. zero-one-four-seven-five. All interested parties should plan to attend. Alternative translation and accommodation for disabled persons is available by advance request.
Alrighty, thank you, so who's here to speak on that? Hi. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Good evening, Brian Crotto, Public Works Director, Town of Winchton.
Nice, thank you, and do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, so could you tell us what's, what's up with the sign, please, and what, where?
So we, we've already installed the base, which is the traffic island, um, we put the posts in as part of the base. If, um, this isn't voted and approved, then we'll put in and out signs on the current posts that are in place now to give some sort of guidance, but basically, what we're looking to do is in, in, install a sign that's, uh, five feet in width, and, uh, what's the height?
Hundred and fourteen.
Hundred and fourteen inches in height, um, it has a small electronic display that's, uh, sixteen inches by five feet. Um, it's not as fancy as the fire station, or the school, or, um, what the legions put it in, it's basically just to put some words. It has some, some minor graphic stuff, but nothing major. Um, so basically, we're just looking to have a sign at the amphitheater. Um, we do have power out there, which is going to power the electronic portion, um, but we were going to put some, some top lights that shine down, um, at the sign, so at night, the, the sign is lit. Other than that, it's just your, your, your basic sign, nothing real fancy. On the bottom, we're able to change out some of the panels as we add, add activities. Um, they're going to be putting disc golf there, so we'll be able to put a symbol for that, um, hiking and, and different stuff. It's pretty cut and dry.
Nice, um, tell me a little bit more about the lighting, please?
So the, the, the lighting would be like your traditional, um, sign light that comes over, and it would just shine at, shine at it.
Okay.
Um, it would reflect better if it came from the top rather than the bottom, because the, the bottom's going to white out the electronic display at night, so we want something that's classy.
And would it be lit all night long?
It's going to be on a photo eye, but we're not talking like, bright, 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 we're talking like subtle.
Okay.
Just enough to eliminate the sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, how far is it setback?
So from the, um, edge of road, it's twelve, the sign's twelve feet from the center line of the road, it's, it's about twenty-four, twenty-five, depending on where you go.
The electronic display would just be during running hours, or is that going to run all night?
That would stay on, um, if there's no events to the display, then it would be off, but if there's events or, um, different stuff in the, in the, in the community, like, you'll see I have a signboard on, uh, on Spring Street. Um, the, the fire station has one over there, and we, we put more than just what is going on at the park, or, um, we put events for the town, so we can advertise like elections, or, it's just a, another way to get information. A lot of people travel.
PSAs and...
Right, it's just, it's, it's to advertise town events, um, depending on what it is.
Okay.
Nice. I would like to open it up to the audience, if there's any comments. And can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Richard Luscher, I live at two-thirty-six Maple Street. The distance that Brian has given is incorrect, it's actually thirty-two and a half feet from the center line of the road that I've measured. The only comment I have is, uh, it's a nice foundation and stuff that the sign is going to be there. The only thing I'm not happy with is... The only thing I'm not happy with is, uh, the town's being a little hypocritical because this thing is already built. And it was built on April sixth. They started construction of this long before and you haven't even granted them the variance to do it yet. It's already there. I know you would hold homeowners' feet to the fire saying, don't build nothing, don't do anything until you have our approval. But yet somehow the town did this already. You go by there, that is there minus the center sign part. And you guys haven't even granted them that. They pushed, started putting it in the day after they started putting it in the paper. And, you know, not only have you not granted it, it hasn't gone through the twenty-day, twenty-one-day, uh, appeal process. And it's already there.
The foundations and the poles are there, so.
Yeah, the pillars are there. It's cemented. It's.
But the sign itself is not there, so.
With loom, the structure is there.
There is a structure there, yes. It's a road.
The, the structure is a traffic island. I don't need a permit for a traffic island. I need a structure. I need a permit for the sign in the middle.
I understand that. It just looks bad and sets a bad precedent that the town goes ahead and does this before they have even had it granted. And the word is granted and they've already done it. So if somebody else goes ahead and builds something without your permission, here's a reason why. I don't think that, you know, they could have waited. It only took them twelve days to do it. It wasn't going to have an effect on the opening of the, of the amphitheater or anything like that. It's just the way it's perceived.
Well, thank you for your comments. I, I hear what you're saying. I think we all hear you loud and clear and.
I, I, I get the optics on it. It does look maybe, you know, not optimal for, for the town to do something. But to, to his point is that if they just wanted to build that and leave that as is.
That's fine.
They don't need to talk to us.
Minus the pillars because those are set. They're, they're cemented in place.
Sure. So I, I get what you're saying, but.
And it may not even, it may exceed what the planning board allows as signs with height because I don't know of any other ten-foot signs in the town of Winchandon.
This one isn't.
It's not attached to a building. It's freestanding.
It, it's not ten feet tall. It's eight and a half, uh, does that say eight and a half feet tall?
It's eight and a half feet to the top of that, but then it's cemented into the ground. So those pillars are ten feet tall.
The signage, believe it or not, that we've been here before, the signs are on one forty, um, for Brian's place are taller.
You guys don't grant signs. The planning board grants signs, don't they?
No.
We have to do the variance for that one.
Yeah, that's the variance, but the actual sign and dimensions is, isn't that what the planning board is currently trying to change? In their bylaws is sizes and dimensions?
Yes, with our.
That goes into the zoning, zoning regulations, so.
So, excuse me, if article nine does pass, the planning board will be, um, the granting authority. But for now, zoning board of appeals is the granting authority.
Alright.
Yeah.
The, the whole reason why the, the traffic island went into play is because they're milling that road, um, next week and they're paving that road May first and May second. So even if I waited for the twenty-day appeal, now I'm cutting into brand-new pavement and I don't.
Does that make sense?
I don't have that time. That's, that's why.
You need the island anyway.
What's that?
You would need the island anyway, whether or not.
If we had a sign or not, that island has to go into play for, for safe exit and entrance, yes.
Alrighty, um.
So we note the, note the objection. Um, but with the sign, you don't have, have an objection with the sign?
No.
For the park?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just the process.
Objection of them going ahead and doing it. And to my knowledge, this isn't even on the print for the amphitheater. There have been other things that have been done up there that are not part of the original plans. I have the plans and this was not ever on yet.
The, um.
So you guys do what you want. You're going to anyway.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments about this site?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Chair votes aye?
Aye.
And any other discussion?
No, I think we're good.
I will, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Along with the, the variance of the, what was it, twelve feet?
Yes.
Yes, along with the variance.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. So it's a very pretty-looking sign.
Yeah, it is very nice.
Just the structure is nice. I drove by it the other day. I was like, it's pretty good.
I know.
Can't wait till it's open. I'm excited.
Yeah, yeah. Wouldn't it be nice to go down there?
Yeah.
Okay, we have one more, um, hearing. And how are we going to do this? Shall I take notes? Are we recording?
Sure. Yeah, we're recording, so.
Okay. So just for the record, Nicole is recusing herself and we have someone here to, uh, on behalf of Ahimsa Haven. Could someone please read the, um, the notice?
If I can get it. I'll do it.
Okay.
Uh, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven oh five PM to discuss the application for a special permit submitted by the applicant Ahimsa Haven Animal Rescue, Inc. For property located at two seventy-one, two seventy-three Central Street owned by the Winchandon CAC, Inc. Also known as Assessor's Map five B three parcel fifty-three, Winchandon, Mass. zero one four seven five. Applicant is seeking a special permit to operate a nonprofit cat shelter at the above address per section five point two point four of the Town of Winchandon's zoning bylaws. Said property is located in a PD planned development district. The hearing will be held in the second floor auditorium at Town Hall one oh nine Front Street, Winchandon, Mass. zero one four seven five. All interested persons, persons should plan to attend. Alternative translation and accommodation for disabled persons is available by advance request.
Alrighty. So.
Aye.
Can you state your name for the?
Yeah, Edward Pullen, Vice President of Ahimsa Haven Animal Rescue.
Okay, and swear to tell the truth.
I swear to, swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Correct. So tell us what's going on.
Um, well, for years, we've, uh, we've been around since nineteen ninety-nine and we've always wanted our own place. If you look back through news, uh, stories about us, you'll, you'll see that we've always said, yeah, we're going to build a place. We're going to build a place. And at some point, we even had some land set aside for us and we eventually said, no, we don't have the money to build a place. And so we had to give the, the town the, the land back. Uh, but over the past few years, we've, uh, built up some money and, uh, this place, the CAC, became available and it'd be perfect for our uses, um, as a, as a cat shelter. And so we want to buy it and that's contingent on getting the permit today.
So this current CAC building will be converted into a cat shelter?
Yes, yes.
Um.
Be the CAT building?
The CAC, yeah. Seriously?
I got that. That was good. Took me a second.
So you need a sp- special per- permit just to operate it?
That's what I understand, yes.
The business.
Yeah.
And, um, it's in the planned development and it's an allowed business. I mean, it's just moving across the street, basically. It's been there for years, a number of years across the street or diagonally.
Yeah, I mean, we might even keep the old place too. We're not sure. We haven't really thought that far ahead. But the other place is a rented place.
Sure.
We want a place of our own.
So will it be offices or how is this space going to be used and parking will be impacted or not or?
We'll probably just have one small space for an office. Um, we haven't decided on how we're going to use it, but the left side upon inspection is ready to go. You could put cats in there. The walls are perfect for it. The right side would need some work. We haven't really decided. Are we going to fill it with cats? We're going to use it for some fundraising or a little of both. So it's in flux. We haven't really talked about it too much. But definitely we'll get cats in there pretty much right after it's bought.
What's the square footage of the area that you're going to use for the cats?
Again, I don't really know because we haven't discussed what, if we're going to use the whole building for cats or not. I would, I would estimate the, the, the left side of it, which is all set to go, would probably have twenty cats in it. The other side seems a bit bigger and if we packed it full of cats, we might get another forty. But I doubt we would ever get to that, that number. I mean, currently we operate, uh, where our, we have a little bit of a, a waiting list. Um, but sometimes we don't have waiting lists, so we're kind of at capacity anyway. So I, I don't foresee us expanding and getting like a thousand cats a year. Currently, we're doing four to five hundred per year.
What is, what are you at? You said you're at capacity right now. What is full capacity for you right now? How many cats?
Um, about sixty.
Okay.
I need sixty kind. We have people who hold cats for us too in their homes. So, but between the two shelters we rent and Petsmart, um, maybe about sixty. At any one time. And, uh, we haven't gotten any complaints about noise. Uh, I don't expect there to be any from that building either. Cats are pretty quiet, mostly.
There's really no residential building?
I, no, I don't think so.
Two of us.
I just, I just saw the ones, but.
Will you be, um, have you thought about hours of operation? Is it going to be similar to what you're doing now on Central Street?
Um, we don't have any open hours currently. Uh, we did before the pandemic and then they, that shut us down. And we kind of decided we're going to do it more on an appointment basis.
Okay.
Uh, we, currently we tend to do the adoptions, uh, on the weekend. But again, that's just kind of volunteers' time. That's when they can do it. Um, so there won't be people in and out of there other than the volunteers to take care of the cats. And that's in the morning and then evening. It's usually just one person doing that.
So it's not going to be a huge, high-traffic?
Uh, no, no, no. I mean, if we ever do get sixty cats in there at once, uh, there might be a couple of volunteers, but that's about it.
Sure, exactly.
Yeah.
Alright. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment or have any questions? Anyone on the board have any questions, any further questions?
I don't have a lot of cat questions.
Excellent choice.
Yeah.
Me too.
It's a good building. It's a, they're perfect for that.
I think it'll help bring traffic to, to the city. Um, people come from all over the state. I mean, we've had people come from Maine and New York.
Wow.
Occasionally, yes. It always boggles my mind when somebody drives from the Cape up to, up to here to find a cat. But they're always, they're coming and I think having a, a place that looks like a, a nice cat shelter is, uh, is an attraction.
Nice.
Yeah, that's a great thing to do, something like that. So anything we can do to help is certainly what we want to do, so.
I agree. So do we have a motion to close this hearing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, what's the feeling of the board?
Aye. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
And move on.
I'll second that motion.
To, uh, approve the special permit, um, for the operation of a cat shelter at the, uh, the old CAC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Alright, well, thank you.
So once again, we'll have it written up and signed.
Okay.
Twenty-day appeal. By that time, you should have your other permits in order and it'll be fun.
We're excited. This is a twenty-four-year-old dream coming to fruition.
Congratulations.
Better late than never, buddy.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, it's really good because a lot of shelters, they just, they open, they're outside and then they close.
They take them out, yeah.
It's based on one person.
How long has this been around?
Since nineteen ninety-nine.
Nice.
Started here in Winchandon. And thus the name Ahimsa Haven. I think it was, uh, created by a couple of hippies. I'm not sure.
That sounds good.
But it's a good name.
It is a great name.
Yeah.
It is. Good. Well, thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing some cool things happening.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You, thank you, definitely. Do we have anything else on the agenda this evening? I think we're good to go then. If anyone would like to, uh, make a motion to close the meeting?
I will, uh, make a motion to close the, uh, zoning board of appeals meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Alright, let's go.